The July 16th, 2018 City of Andelia Council Meeting will now come to order. We will have a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, you've had an opportunity to look over the minutes of our council study session of June the 18th and also of our council meeting of June the 18th. Are there any corrections or revisions to be made? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. This evening, we do have a proclamation for Bee City, USA. So, let me come down and... Joe, would you come up?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible)
This is Camille.
Camille!
Yeah, she's a 16th dog that was doing for K9 Companion.
Sixteenth dog!
Today, we, Camille and I, visited Allwood to see the new bee display to visit all week. And it's really neat. And she behaved herself there too, but she's just six months old.
Oh, wow!
So, I was kind of, I almost wanted to call you today to see if it was okay for me to break the law.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Well, I just did it on my own.
Good training, good training.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you all for being here. And Joe, we did this to you. And we'll see you next year then.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
Okay, continuing on, we do have a public hearing this evening. And Ms., I just want to make mention the fact that Ms. Holloway is our Assistant City Manager, and she's taking the place of our regular city manager because he's on vacation. So, we in our study session, she's a pro already. So, Amber, would you, I'm sorry, I'm so used to calling you that. Ms. Holloway, would you go ahead and explain what the public hearing is for the agricultural district renewal application?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. Ms. Hartline submitted an application for farmland renewal. This item was reviewed in tonight's study session, at which time council decided not to object. Therefore, no public hearing is required.
Okay, so we just go ahead with the rest of our agenda then?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. We do have the section for comments from interested citizens. So, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment to us, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your I'm just waiting here. Seeing none, I will continue with our city manager's report. And there are no information items this evening. However, there is, and there are two action items. The extension of time on Brown School Village Section 4. Ms. Holloway?
Yes, Your Honor. A request has been received for a one-year extension to August 8th of 2019 to complete the construction of sidewalks for four lots in the Brown School Woods subdivision, Section 4. Surety will be renewed to cover the extension period.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the extension of time at the Brown School Village, Section 4.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Ayler, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve the extension time for Brown School Village, Section 4. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Boards and commissions appointments, Mrs. Holloway?
Yes, Your Honor. Emily Esaw has requested reappointment to the Public Art and Vandelia Committee.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the reappointment of Emily Esaw to the Public Art and Vandelia Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fars, second by Councilman Blakesley, that we do reappoint Mrs. Emily Esaw to the Public Art and Vandelia Committee. Are there any comments? I'd just like to make one. I know that she was on the committee previously, and I think with a little extra nudge, she was, I think she's really, she likes it, but I think that she was opening up possibly a spot for somebody else. So, we're very glad to have her back on that committee. She works very hard. Anybody else?
I just want to say, it happens with a lot of the members, they're expected to do quite a bit, but that wasn't the reason. They all feel that to be on an art committee, they need to be talented in that arena. Whereas, most of the time, it's an administrative job of seeing that things get taken care of, and she was very good at that part. She also helped us out a lot with any event that we had. She was our go-to person for finding other volunteers. So, she's helped us out quite a bit, and I really didn't have to nudge. She thought it would open a spot for someone else, and I kind of told her we'd like her to be back on it. It didn't take much of a push.
Oh, good, good, good.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
Yes, and the motion passes 6-0. We have no old business this evening, and that brings us to our first resolution, and that's Resolution 18-R-44. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs and authorizing additional action as necessary for the city to participate in such programs with respect to the Marview Avenue Water Main Replacement Project.
Thank you. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. This application and the next four, or, all four resolutions here are for the next round of OPWC funding, which is due on August 22nd. Staff is proposing to submit the Marview Avenue Water Main Replacement Project in order to replace 1,170 lineal feet of water main that is over 60 years old at an estimated cost of $200,000. This water main has experienced 12 breaks over its lifetime, with four of those being in the last three years. This project is budgeted for 2019.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Resolution 18-R-44 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Herbs, and second by Councilman Aylers, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-44 as presented. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion passes 6-0. Resolution 18-R-45, Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs and authorizing additional action as necessary for the city to participate in such programs with respect to the Brindelstone Drive Water Main Replacement Project.
Thank you. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, staff is proposing to submit the Brindelstone Water Main Replacement Project for OPWC funding in order to replace 2,000 lineal feet of water main that is over 40 years old at an estimated project cost of $340,000. This water main has experienced 10 breaks in the last five years, with five of them being just in this last year. This project is not currently in our five-year capital plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 18-R-45.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakesley, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-45 as presented. Comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
And the motion passes 6-0. Resolution 18-R-46, Mr. McDonald?
Amber, can I just clarify on the last one, that, what was your vote? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
A resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program and authorizing additional action as necessary for the city to participate in such programs with respect to the Northwoods Boulevard Reconstruction Project.
Thank you. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. Staff is proposing to submit the Northwoods Boulevard Reconstruction Phase 1, which is I-75 to west of Flying J, for OPWC funding. This project, including engineering costs, has an estimated cost of $1,223,253. A total reconstruction project was submitted in 2017 for MVRPC transportation funding, but was not approved. The local project proposes to reconstruct the curb, gutter, and street with OPWC financial assistance.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 18-R-46.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayler, second by Councilman Gerhardt, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-46 as presented. Comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. Resolution 18-R-47, Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs and authorizing additional action as necessary for the city to participate in such programs with respect to the US-40 Resurfacing Project.
Thank you very much. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. Staff is proposing to submit the National Road Resurfacing Project for OPWC funding. This is an ODOT project that is scheduled for the second half of 2019. We're requesting OPWC financial assistance to go towards the city's local share of $484,100.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 18-R-47 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fars, second by Vice Mayor Herbs, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-47 as presented. Once again, are there any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. Resolution 18-R-48, Mr. McDonald?
A resolution awarding the bid for the Foley Drive Reconstruction Project requested by the Public Works Department to CG Construction and Utilities at the lowest and best bid price of $841,500.
Thank you. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bids for Phase 1 of the Foley Drive Reconstruction Project, being the area between National Road and Bristol Drive, were opened on July 10th. We received seven bids. Financial assistance from the Ohio Public Works Commission was approved in the form of a 50% grant up to $400,000. Our local share of this project will be paid out of the Safe and Stable Levy Fund, the Water Fund, the Sanitary Sewer Fund, and the Stormwater Fund. This project was designed in-house as part of our in-kind contribution. The project did come in over budget, and as such, we are proposing a supplemental appropriation to cover this difference. The lowest and best bid came from CG Construction and Utilities out of Miami-Sburg, Ohio, with a bid price of $841,500.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Resolution 18-R-48 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Herbs, and second by Councilman Blakesley, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-48 as presented. Comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Mayor Setser?
Yes, and the motion passes 6-0. Resolution 18-R-49, Mr. McDonald?
A resolution awarding the bid for the Skyview Drive Water Main Replacement Project requested by the Public Works Department to Durst Brothers Excavating at the lowest and best bid price of $193,155.
Thank you. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bids for the Skyview Water Main Replacement Project were opened on July 10th, with 12 bids being received. Financial assistance from the Ohio Public Works Commission was approved in the form of a 25% grant and 25% five-years-yield interest loan. This project was designed in-house as part of our contribution, and our lowest and best bidder was Durst Construction with a bid price of $193,555.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 18-R-49 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakesley, second by Councilman Ayler, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-49. approve Resolution 18-R-49 as presented. Are there questions or comments?
I guess it was brought up in our workshop that doing the engineering in-house really helped to save on this, even though the other resolution was slightly over. I think we still realized quite a bit of savings there, so appreciate staff taking care of that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. Resolution 18-R-50. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution declaring the official intent and reasonable expectation of the City of Vandelia on behalf, on behalf of the State of Ohio to reimburse its water fund for the Skyview Drive Water Main Replacement Project, OPWC Project Loan Control Number CD07V, with the proceeds of tax-exempt debt of the State of Ohio.
Thank you. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Skyview Drive Water Main Replacement Project is partially funded by a 25% OPWC grant and a 25% OPWC loan. The adoption of this resolution certifies to the Ohio Public Works Commission that reimbursement received from OPWC, which are tax-exempt bonds issued by the State of Ohio, will be reimbursed to our water fund.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion we approve Resolution 18-R-50.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhardt, second by Councilwoman Ayers, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-50. Comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. We have an ordinance in its first reading this evening, and that's Ordinance 18-18. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance adopting the 2017 Ohio Fire Code and amending Section 1610.01 of the City Fire Prevention Code.
Thank you. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance would adopt the 2017 Ohio Fire Code. The Ohio Fire Code was recently updated to reflect the most current standards and best practices.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 18-18, first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Blakeslee, second by Vice Mayor Herbst, that we do approve Ordinance 18-18 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. There are no ordinances in their second reading, nor are there any emergence, ooh, yes, we do. And we are going right into emergency ordinances. And the first one is Emergency Ordinance 18-12. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $1,399,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purposes of acquiring approximately 201 acres of real property bounded generally by US Route 40, Peters Pike, Stone Quarry Road, and Dogleg Road, in support of economic development and job creation within the city and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. The purpose of, the purchase of land and the construction of infrastructure for Stone Quarry Crossings has been financed since 2006 through the issuance of bond anticipation notes that must be renewed annually. The total amount currently due is $1,514,000 in principal, plus an additional $33,971 in interest. Sale proceeds from the MAC land purchase in 2017 in the amount of $115,000 will be applied towards this principal balance. The remaining principal balance on the notes will be $1,399,000. Those notes are due to mature on August the 8. And if, and I would just remind council that an affirmative vote of five members is necessary when passing emergency legislation.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open up publicly hearing, and that means if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your statement. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move that we approve Ordinance 18-12 as an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fars, second by Councilwoman Blakeslee, that we do approve Emergency Ordinance 18-12. Are there any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. Emergency Ordinance 18-13. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $2,442,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of refunding bonds originally issued by the city for the purposes of paying cost of (a) improving the municipal complex by constructing, equipping, and improving a justice center to house the courts and police department and related activities, renovating, equip, equipping, and improving the municipal building, constructing related parking, parking facilities, and acquiring real properties, property and interest therein in connection therewith, all together with the necessary appurtenances thereto, and (b) constructing, equipping, and furnishing a municipal community recreation center, including a gymnasium, swimming pool, track, fitness area, lockers, office, and other recreational and related support facilities, all together with the necessary appurtenances thereto, and acquiring real property and interest therein in connection therewith, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. My part's a little easier. Bond anticipation notes related to the 1996 bonds issued for the recreation center, justice center, and municipal building projects are due to mature on September 5. The total amount due is $3,259,000 in principal, plus $64,999 in interest. The 2018 budget appropriated $817,000 towards principal plus interest. Therefore, the remaining principal balance on these notes will be $2,442,000. The reissuance of the recreation center, justice center, municipal building notes will be combined with the reissuance of fire truck notes to save on issuance costs.
Thank you very much. Once again, since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open a public hearing. So if there's anyone in our audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment. Seeing none, I will close the emergency public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the emergency ordinance 18-13 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Herbst, second by Councilwoman Ayers, that we do approve Emergency Ordinance 18-13 as presented. Are there any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. Emergency Ordinance 18-14. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $384,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring a fire apparatus, together with all related appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bond anticipation notes related to the 2016 purchase of a new rescue engine are set to expire on September the 5. And our 2018 budget includes $48,000 towards principal and $8,616 in interest. The remaining principal balance on these notes will be $384,000. Again, the reissuance of the fire truck notes will be combined with the reissuance of those recreation center, justice center, and municipal building notes to save on issuance costs.
Thank you very much. Once again, since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open a public hearing. So if there's anyone in our audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and your statement. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move that we approve Ordinance 18-14 as an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ayers, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Emergency Ordinance 18-14. Are there any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. Emergency Ordinance 18-15. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance enacting a new chapter 1032 titled Small Cell Facilities in the Catified Ordinances of the City of Vandelia and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. Recently enacted House Bill 478 created statewide regulations governing the deployment of small cell wireless infrastructure within a municipality's right-of-way. The purpose of this legislation is to allow for the orderly deployment and implementation of new technologies to promote economic development while protecting and preserving local character of neighborhoods and historic districts. This ordinances establishes general procedures and standards for the siting, construction, placement, colocation, modification, operation, and removal of small cell wireless infrastructure.
Thank you very much. Once again, since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open a public hearing. So if there's anyone in our audience who would like to make a comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your statement. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 18-15 as emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Blakeslee, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we approve Emergency Ordinance 18-15. Are there any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. Emergency Ordinance 18-16. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance authorizing a temporary advance and reimbursement between various funds of the city for expenses relating to the OPWC Foley Drive Reconstruction Phase One Project, together with all related appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance authorizes the advance of $230,000 from the General Fund to the Ohio Public Works Commission Fund for the Foley Drive Reconstruction Project. The General Fund will be reimbursed once the monies have been received from OPWC.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open a public hearing. So if there's anyone in our audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your statement. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Make a motion we approve Ordinance 18-16 an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhardt, second by Councilwoman Ayers, that we do approve the Emergency Ordinance 18-16 as presented. Are there any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. And our final emergency ordinance tonight is Ordinance 18-17. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Vandelia, Montgomery County, Ohio, during the calendar year ending December 31, 2018, and amending Ordinance 17-30 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Holloway.
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance amends 2018 appropriations as follows. It is an increase of $9,100 to the Stormwater Special Revenue Fund, an increase of $12,350 to the Water Fund, an increase of $10,450 to the Sewer Fund, an increase of $76,350 to the Police Fire Street CIP Fund, and finally, an increase of $14,400 to the OPWC Fund. These appropriations will account for a grant received from the Ohio Public Works Commission and an increase in cost over the budgeted amount for Phase One of the Foley Drive Reconstruction Project.
Thank you. As with the other emergency ordinances, I will open up a public hearing. So if there's anyone in our audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to our podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your statement. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move that we approve Ordinance 18-17 as an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ayers, second by Vice Mayor Herbst, that we do approve Emergency Ordinance 18-17. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. Reports from our boards and commissions, we have a conditional use permit at 4301 Little York Road. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. Robert and Lorraine Goodwin are requesting conditional approval to permit the raising of one horse at 4301 Little York Road, which is situated in the Agricultural Zoning District. The horse is to be raised in an 80-foot by 95-foot pen with a five-foot-high wooden fence. The pen is located 75 feet from Little York Road. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at its May 22 meeting and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, that animal waste be cleaned and properly disposed of in a timely manner such that it does not become a hazard or cause a disturbance to adjacent property owners. Number two, to minimize adverse effects, the fenced area must be properly surfaced with a material such as sawdust or wood chips to avoid runoff. And number three, that the fence does not provide for any gaps and is properly connected all the way around so as not to allow the horse to escape from the fenced area.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the conditional use at 4301 Little York, including the Planning Commission's, the BZA's notes. I said, right, the first time, Planning Commission.
I'm waiting. Second. Thank you. I was waiting. Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Blakeslee, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve the conditional use at 4301 Little York Road. Are there any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. We have a variance request at 273 Mount Air Drive. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. Pamela Bates is requesting a front yard setback variance to allow an eight-foot by 21-foot patio cover at 273 Mount Air Drive. The house currently has a front yard setback of 30 feet, which is the minimum permitted in the residential single-family four zoning district. Architectural features such as canopies are permitted to project not more than three feet into the front yard. Therefore, a five-foot front yard setback variance is necessary in order to accommodate this patio cover. The Board of Zoning Appeals reviewed this request at its May 23 meeting and voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve the variance for the front porch at 273 Mount Air Drive.
Second.
It's been moved by Council, Councilman, oh, excuse me, Vice Mayor Herbst, and second by Councilwoman Ayers, to approve the variance. We do have the owners here this evening. Would you like to make any kind of comment? Okay. Would any council members like to make a comment? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. We have a conditional use permit at 7100 Webster Street. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. Saff Family LLC is requesting conditional use approval in order to allow a warehouse and outdoor storage use at 7100 Webster Street, which is located in the Office Industrial Park Zoning District. The applicant proposes to establish a commercial storage facility for small products like medical, IT, food, and general business products for delivery. The applicant also proposes the outdoor storage of vans and trailers on-site along the Webster Street frontage. At its meeting on June 12, the Planning Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the warehouse and outdoor storage use on 12 acres at 7100 Webster Street, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the outdoor storage area be effectively screened from the public right-of-way by maintaining the existing mound along Webster Street, and by moving the outdoor storage to a location, to an area blocked by the warehouse units. Number two, the outdoor storage not exceed 25% of the proposed 12-acre development site. And number three, that the landscaping comply with the applicable provisions of Chapter 1278.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the conditional use permit for warehouse and outdoor storage on 7100 Webster Street.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ayers, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve the conditional use permit at 7100 Webster Street. Are there any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. We have a variance request at 1201 Bailey Avenue. Ms. Holloway?
Thank you, Your Honor. Collette Coscuella is requesting a variance to allow a 48-inch-high fence in Zone A where 42 inches is the maximum height permitted. Zone A is the area lying between the street right-of-way and a line 15 feet behind the established front foundation building line. Council tabled this request at your June 18 meeting, and the applicant has requested that City Council again table action on this item until your August 20 meeting while she awaits the contractor to fix the fence. The fence is scheduled to be fixed on Friday, August 3.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
I move that we table this variance request for 1201 Bailey Avenue until August 20th, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fars, second by Councilwoman Blakeslee, that we table the variance request at 1201 Bailey Avenue until our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say congratulations to city staff. I was totally wrong. I thought there was no chance Lowe's would make this repair, so eating crow, but happy to do it.
I think all of us would say it was a good job, and we really do appreciate the efforts because... I... Councilman Gerhardt, you weren't the only one. I think all of us sitting up here thought, oh, we'll try at least, and it was a wonderful attempt, so...
Very good.
All right, because now we're going to be voting on tabling the variance request until our next meeting. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, and I do just want to reiterate, this was at the applicant's request and not at council's request for the table. Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. Council, you've had the Board of Zoning Appeals minutes of May the 22nd...or 23rd, excuse me, the Parks and Recreation Draft Minutes of May the 16th, Planning Commission minutes of June the 12th. Do you have any comments about any of those?